So it's that, some are, some aren't. All right. Although you're, I'm gonna call a meeting to order, although you're not required to fill out a speaker form. It helps provide the meeting moving forward and we can predict how long the speakers. And also allows me the opportunity to contact people after the meetings and get back to you on topics. And spend as many hours as you like on it instead of just your three minutes. So if you'd like to speak this evening, if you would be kind enough to fill a form out, doesn't have to have your name on it. As we saw last meeting, we had Jack Daniels write this morning. And if you could shut off your phones and stuff like that, we appreciate it. And Ms. Ben Clark, can you pledge this tonight?
Place your right hand over your heart, face the flag, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation and one government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Oh, yeah. I think the people in some of these recent terror attacks were the ones in my thoughts this evening. Okay, Madam Clark, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Hafner.
Here.
Mayor from Tim Bishop. Councilmember Ben Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Correa.
Here.
Councilmember Loa.
Here. Can I make a motion to excuse Mr. Bishop if he's gonna be absent?
Any objection? So, okay, waiver of full reading of resolutions?
A motion, second.
A motion to second?
I'm going one, councilman, and I forget already.
I don't have the both page yet.
There you go. It's there, right in the middle.
Oh, there it is.
You wanna sit right here for a sec? Okay, four zero, Mr. Bishop missing. Okay, new business, okay, I'd like to...
Can I go to appointments first, Steve?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm gonna, I'd like to take this out of order just so we can move it on. Although, I don't think we, I don't think they showed up here, but on the, I'd like to jump to item number... Six point one. So the Library Board of Trustees, I'd like to nominate Deborah Rakowski-Hines for that position, retired schoolteacher on that.
Does that require a second? If so, I'll second.
Okay. Yeah, it's just the way the machine's set up, so we're gonna, this is what we do it, it's just easier. Okay, shows four zero with Mr. Bishop Babson on the housing.
Were we not supposed to call for public comments on that?
We should.
Any public comments? Saw none. I didn't get any speaker cards either, so they... Any comments on the, on the...
What is the person's name again?
Christina Frigasheens. She's a, she's a resident of the Boulders, any comments on that? See none on, that's my nomination?
One second, if you need a second.
Did I screw that thing up? It was, it was my fault, I apologize. Okay, call for it, well.
And Vicki, can you read us the names of both people again so we can pencil it in?
Yes, so it was Deborah Rakowski-Hines on the library board?
Yes, and it was Christina Frigasheens.
Frigasheens, yeah. On the housing vacancy. Okay. Did those, did those all show up up there then? Okay, all right. All right, so...
No, the board, you mean the board, right?
What's that?
The names didn't show up, just the...
I'm sorry.
Did you ask if the names showed up there or the votes?
In the vote, it did show the name.
Oh.
And so it did show Christina Frigasheens for the housing authority and Deborah Rakowski-Hines for the library.
Okay, and, and with this system, and this all showed up on the votes, right, we're all good? We can move on? Thank you, all right. I'm just trying to work with the machinery here.
Yeah.
You know? All right, so we're moving on to item number five point one.
Mayor and members of the council, once again, we're here to talk about energy and the community choice aggregation program. Ben Luch will be presenting the staff report on items five point one and five point two. This is a workshop format, and so we have time for significant discussion. Because this is really the central focus of the entire meeting this evening. And so hopefully we'll leave here with some decisions and much more educated between now and whatever time we set aside for this.
As mentioned, mayor and members of the city hopes on Benjamin Mitchell at the Public Works Department. And what happened for you is the decision whether we're going to move forward with the community trace aggregation program, excuse me, otherwise known as CCA or not. So if we're going to move forward, you need to pass, adopt resolution number CC two thousand nineteen zero dash zero two nine, which will allow an interfund loan of about one point five million dollars from that, from the general fund reserves into a new account that we will establish for the CCA. This money, these funds will be used for establishing the CCA and all the costs associated with it. And before we can do anything else relating to moving forward with the CCA, this needs to be passed. And then we can start working on all of the additional action items that are required. If we fail to pass this resolution for today's council meeting, we probably won't meet the April deadlines for some paperwork that needs to be submitted to the Public Utilities Commission. And we'll have to wait till probably May or June of two thousand twenty-one before we can start moving forward with the CCA program. If, if you'll notice that in our staff report, we still have quite a few concerns relating to the formation of a CCA. And I don't know if you've received the supplement or not, we did have some clarifications on some of the concerns. Where depending on how you wanna run the CCA, the cost may, wouldn't be the four million as we anticipated. And we may just need an additional five hundred thousand dollars, which would be used for what's called a lockbox to secure funding so that we can pay the energy providers. But from what we understand, Cal Choice, which is a group that we would join to form the CCA, that most of the energy providers, all the energy providers have agreed to defer payments for forty-five days, allowing us to generate revenue and to pay them, pay them versus us having the money upfront and ready to pay them. And then receiving the revenue after the fact for the services provided. And so we updated our information so that you can see if we decide to move forward that way. Instead, it'll be about two million dollars that would be loaned to this program from the, from the general, from the general fund reserves versus four million like we anticipated, which would be two point five million dollars more to have money secured for payment for, to these energy providers.
Man, and just for clarification for myself, these five hundred thousand dollars will have to be paid within forty-five days or after forty-five days?
Well, five hundred thousand dollars is, really the purpose of it is to put in what's called a lockbox. It's, I guess you could call it like collateral or trust. And we're not, it's supposed to just stay there. And once we, and so although we're pulling the money out of our general fund reserves to put it in there, we're not actually looking to spend the money, it just needs to be sitting there in the bank just in case something happens. Once we start building up sufficient reserves, we would put that five hundred thousand dollars back into the general fund and we would use the reserves to hold that spot.
And what assurances do we have that it's not gonna be two million dollars later?
Well, well, Cal Choice, Cal Choice is here and they could probably explain it better than I could. But how they've run the program in the past, they've told us that the other Lancaster and the other four member agencies haven't had to put seed money for running their CCA program. And they've all worked off of this model and it has worked out for them.
Okay, thank you.
And so, like I mentioned, there was that clarification. And then we also had a clarification about the finance, the financing of Cal Choice, where we read their CAFRA, which is their annual financial report. And we were interpreting it one way and then it was explained to us that we were interpreting it wrong. And we have the explanation in that supplemental report outlining how we thought it was operating at a deficit. But it's because of how Lancaster paid their proportionate share into Cal Choice, why it looked, appeared as a deficit to us, but in fact it wasn't.
There's an accounting principle issue.
Exactly.
All right.
And so it, there's a lot of questions, there's a lot of decisions that need to be made. We outlined several concerns we have with the power market and how it's constantly changing. How the Public Utilities Commission is changing their policies towards community choice aggregation programs. And we outlined the anticipated savings, which were expecting about one percent of generation costs, which would translate to about half a percent of the overall bill for each rate pair that would be a part of the CCA program. And also the finances and how much seed money we have to put in. And we anticipate that in the year two thousand twenty-one, I believe, that we would be able to pay back the funding that we took out of the general fund reserves and then we would start generating revenue. But that revenue is exclusive towards the CCA program. It's not just general revenue where we can spend the money as the council would see fit. So we can invite a representative from Cal Choice up if you have some questions for them or I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have specifically for me.
Well, I think you gave us about five pages of information here, maybe you could do the Reader's Digest version of that. At least so that everybody's got the same information here.
Right. Okay, well, like I mentioned, we're looking at about one point five million dollars to this program. And if you adopt this interfund resolution, you will also adopt a budget that we've established for this program. Where a portion of that one point five million dollars will be spent in the remainder of this fiscal year. And the remaining amount would be spent, spent next fiscal year. We are anticipating, as I mentioned, about a half a percent savings on the overall, overall bill. And so I know there was a little bit of confusion of why we're saying one percent one spot, point five percent another. And another spot we're saying fifty cents per month. And really what it is, is there's two parts to an Edison bill, the Edison bill, one to form a CCA. One part is for the transmission of the energy to your home, which remains with Edison. And Edison will continue to do the billing. But then the other half of that bill will now be for generation costs, which would be where the city of Palmdale's CCA would be involved. For that generation portion, you would say participants in the CCA program would save about one percent off of their bill. But it's about a fifty, fifty split. The transmission and the generation together are about fifty fifty. So that's why we're saying it's about a half percent over the overall bill. And we were saying fifty cents, assuming that the average resident spends about a hundred dollars per month on their energy bill. But as we all know, it's pretty fluid where, for example, in my household, my wife is very aggressive in making sure we conserve energy. And you can imagine what I hear from her when I leave the lights on in a room and walk, walk away. While in other households, they may have three teenagers living there who are playing video games all day and they're probably spending three or four hundred dollars per month. So it's really difficult to pinpoint exactly how much each resident is gonna save. The same goes with energy costs for businesses. Some businesses are a warehouse where they're only paying for lighting. While other businesses are very energy intensive and they may be spending thousands upon thousands of dollars per month for their energy. So really it would just be half a percent of their total energy cost is what they're gonna save. And we really can't pinpoint it to a specific dollar amount because of how fluid it is. As we mentioned, there is the power charge indifference adjustment. What that is, is that the Public Utilities Commission, in allowing cities to form a CCA, they've said that the rate payers that remain with the utility can't be stuck with a bill of the additional costs that are now being incurred for the loss of those clients. And so that needs to be spread out over the CCAs to leave the utility whole and so that the rate payers aren't paying that price. And it's constantly changing. It's, I, I don't know when was the latest decision, there's supposed to be a decision for this month. I don't know if that's been released yet or not. There was one release, I believe, back in December. And it's changing, so the savings change along with that. Where a couple of years ago, residents would, would have saved perhaps close to five percent off of their total energy bill by joining the CCA. Now we're saying it's about half a percent and it's mainly due to the power charge indifference adjustment. Time of use rates is of a big concern for us because we can't control that. That's pretty much market factors. And it doesn't matter if you're in a CCA or not, it's going to affect you. And because the state of California has been so successful in implementing solar energy, what has happened is that the peak times used to be in the middle of the day from about noon till about four o'clock. That has now shifted from about four o'clock to nine o'clock. Because we're actually at times over generating electricity in the middle of the day, where we're actually paying other states to take our energy because we have too much of it. And so that has caused, caused a shift in the market, which will mean for some that they have to do behavior change. For others, it's just going to be costly. For example, for us, we can't say, well, we're gonna turn off all the lights in our parks till nine P M. And then we're gonna turn them on. So we're going to just have to absorb those additional costs. And so we're just pointing out that it doesn't matter if you're a part of a CCA or not, this is what's gonna happen. And every, everyone's going to be affected with that.
So, so on your time of use rates, how does that get impacted based on your power source?
Based on the power source?
Yes, sir.
Uh, well, it's just the market factor. It's just when energy is at its lowest value compared to when energy is at its highest value. And so it's just the market influences how, even though, let's assume we can't do it, but because of what I was going to explain next. But with renewable portfolio standard, but let's assume that we've decided to, for all of our renewable energy, we're not gonna do anything, we have nothing to do with solar and we're gonna use wind power or, or waste to energy power, et cetera. There's still those market influences that change the price based on the time of day because there's a higher demand at certain times versus others. So even though it might have a minimal impact, overall, it's not gonna have that, that big of an impact because of how the market is playing into the value of that energy, if that makes any sense. Now, the renewable portfolio standard, the state of California now has a goal to hit a hundred percent renewables. And what we've been observing is that many utilities are trying to usher in a hundred percent renewable energy at a much faster pace. For example, L A D W P announced recently that, that instead of retrofitting many of their ones through cooling natural gas powered power plants, they're gonna shut them down and replace it with renewable energy. However, renewable energy is still at a premium compared to natural gas energy and other forms of energy. And beyond that, there's also the issue of how it's intermittent. And there are storage technologies out there, but they're not really at the point where they can really accommodate the entire grid for the state of California. And they're pretty costly, that, that kind of energy is also at a premium. So that is a concern for us too, because we're, we're a pretty big market, but not big enough to affect the entire market. And so with all these power plants shutting down and this shift from renewable, from non-renewable to pure renewable energy, we feel that there's going to be a time when rates are just going to skyrocket because we just don't have that non-renewable backup power to provide the state with the energy it needs. The Palmdale Power Plant, we were just outlining it because it's been outlined in past staff reports. If we joined Cal Choice, that won't usher in the power plant. There's not enough energy load of all members, for all members of Cal Choice for us to have it, have it happen. And besides that, most jurisdictions, they join a CCA because they want greener energy. So no one's really going to wanna sign a long-term agreement for non-renewable energy. We've talked to the county's energy program, the CPA, and they didn't demonstrate very much interest in doing a long-term agreement either for non-renewable energy. So it's pretty much a moot point at this point when it comes to whether or not we should join this CCA or if we should join the county's CCA program. And we're exploring other ways to make the power plant come to fruition. But really, our membership in a CCA, at this point, doesn't look like it would affect what would happen.
Good.
That could change because of how the power market is changing. But at this point in time, it doesn't seem like membership in one or the other would affect it. Financial feasibility, I outlined that where we were reading the CAFRA differently. And once we explained how Cal Choice has clarified how the CAFRA should be read. And then there's the next steps where we're saying, Cal Choice recommended that we, we procure about one point three, well, it's one million three hundred thirty-nine thousand seven hundred forty-two dollars for the implementation of the CCA program. And we, just to be conservative, we were recommending a one point five million interfund loan to give us that a little over one million doll, oh, I mean, one hundred thousand dollars wiggle room for unforeseen circumstances.
The, I'm looking at the hundred million and a half, now that's to cover the budget to run the program?
To start the program.
To start the program.
Not to run the program.
Okay, so what will it cost us as a city to maintain and run the program annually? What is it gonna cost us out of our general fund for staff time?
Well, that's, that's where I was explaining, it depends on how we wanna run the program. If we want, if we want security in our, our accounts in case something catastrophic happens and Edison can't give us the money in time and we need to pay these power generators, we're saying we would probably need to do another interfund loan for about two point five million dollars.
But we'd have to hire additional staff to do this?
Yes, well, I don't know.
So staff would be part of the budget, initially it would be paid through that initial one point five.
Right.
But then as the, once the program's up and running, all those costs would get reimbursed back. And the staff in the future, as the program's up and running, gets paid as part of the CCA. It gets paid with rate payer dollars, not general fund dollars.
So in, so in future budgets, where would those positions come from, from the general fund? The two and a half positions that are gonna be...
It'd be an enterprise fund, right?
It would be funded out of an enterprise fund, correct. And probably percentages of the administration and, and all that would come out of it, out of the enterprise fund.
So on page four here, those account numbers, starting with, towards the bottom of the page here, that's all enterprise fund?
Yes, that's the entire, that's the enterprise fund, based on the one point five million dollar interfund loan. So, so that one point five million dollars would be put into this account for those two, for this current fiscal year and next fiscal year as outlined, outlined in that table.
Then what?
And then once the CCA starts generating revenue, we would pay off the loan, the money that we've loaned ourselves.
How do you determine what that revenue is then?
Well, see, that's my question. My, my, my fear is that, you know, employees' wages always go up, they never go down. And do we have a guarantee that the revenue will keep up with the pace of, of employee benefits and healthcare and that type of thing? Are we always going to have enough revenue to make a profit to pay all that?
I would say that the, the employee portion is probably the least of our worries as far as the difference of that and buying thirty-six million dollars worth of power each year at the right rate where the rate payer revenue comes back in. An issue is really going to be rate setting to make sure, predicting the future of what our rates are gonna be or buying contracts that we know what the rate's gonna be out a year, two years or more. And then setting rates to make sure that all of our costs are covered and funds are coming in to go into reserve. So that if we wanna do a future energy project, there's money set aside in reserve. If the energy market gets more volatile, there's money set aside in reserve.
So I guess, I'm, I'm gonna put on my citizen hat right at this moment. I'm gonna be John Q. Public or Jane Q. Public. And I'm sitting at home and I'm watching this, I'm like, I'm gonna go like, wait, so they're gonna have all those high-paying jobs out of this fund so I can save ten or twenty dollars on my bill? It, it seems like a real imbalance there to me as a citizen. So I'm gonna save twenty bucks, but yet we're gonna have a lot of really good jobs going in, into the city, which, you know, jobs are good. But is that where we wanna spend our money as a city? Where we could be doing other things with that money? Am I, am I making sense?
Excellent policy question for the council to make a policy call on.
And I, I could add, there's some cities that have chosen to not generate any revenue off of the CCA and they're paying for the staffing needed out of pocket. Or they're having Cal Choice do all of the work and they're just having an employee sign off. Well, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna put it that way. Of course, there's an employee providing oversight, but they're just making employees absorb it in their regular workload. So there's other ways to address it, but we don't have a staffing to be able to monitor this program and keep on top of it the way we believe the council would like us to do it. And that's why we're recommending these staffing changes. And we definitely don't have the clerical support needed for additional, additional, the additional calls we'll get, et cetera. But we're not even proposing an, an entire clerical person. That person would be divided up among other...
So in my, let's, let's put on my imaginary world here where we make boatloads of money and we're paying off our staff, they're making good money and everybody's happy. And the taxpayers are saving twenty, thirty, fifty dollars a month. Well, we, if we get a bunch of extra money, do we get to spend it anywhere we want in the city?
It's restricted to the enterprise.
Just to the program?
Right.
So it would go back to the taxpayers?
It would go back to, it has to go back to the rate payers, not the taxpayers, because you can opt out.
That's what I meant, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, because you can opt out. So for example, when, if we decide to...
So if we get a lot of money, they can get a big bonus on their bill, like they would.
If that's what the council would like to do or...
It can't be spent on parks or roads or it's just totally restricted to just rate paying.
The way we read the law, it's to benefit the rate payers. And since not every resident of the city of Palmdale will be a, a rate payer. And everyone coming, not every, obviously anyone visiting our city is not a... And everyone coming, not every, obviously anyone visiting our city is not a ratepayer, we would feel that, for example, a park lighting retrofit project. Probably doesn't fit that litmus test of being beneficial to the ratepayers.
But setting up a program like. Energy efficiency programs, lighting retrofits and things like that, that a ratepayer could apply for to get. Uh, a grant to provide that within their, uh, within their residents, that, that could happen.
If the council so chooses to, uh, yeah, with their revenue, they could do, for example, we can say, well, they can say, well, we'll subsidize. X number of rep, ratepayers to get a Nest thermostat in their home. And then that's benefiting the ratepayers, it doesn't benefit every single ratepayer, but it's a benefit that would only go to the ratepayers and not the general public.
But just to clarify, it's to those ratepayers that choose to participate in, in the program, not to every ratepayer. Those that opt out.
Like I said, you know, I, every person gets a chance to opt out and we've. Uh, everyone goes off the assumption that about five percent will opt out, I believe Lancaster informing their C C A had much less opt out than that. And so, just to be conservative, most jurisdictions, when they're planning it, plan on a five percent opt-out rate. But, anyone can opt out and that lives here in the city of Palmdale, and so, anyone who opts out. Will just stay with Edison and they'll, they'll remain with the status quo of how Edison provides their.
My concern is people that, when this gets on board, why don't we have an opt-in instead of an opt-out?
It's Prop two eighteen's process, right?
Well, a person can opt out and later opt in, but I believe there's some costs associated with that.
The reason I ask is that, and no offense to Lancaster, but when they started their, I mean, the complaints and the newspaper constantly led us to the editor, like. You know, we were all opted in, we didn't know we had to opt out, and then when they tried to opt out, there was a big issue with customer service and that type of thing, so. I would like to see that not happen to our city if we proceed with this.
And that's one of the reasons why we're recommending a staff member here in Palmdale to make sure. That issues like that don't happen, that if someone wants to call us and wants someone to better explain how this works. We have a staff member who's gonna be very well-versed in how this program works, who can explain it. In second grade level terms or college graduate level terms, depending on how much in, uh, information you want and. And to what degree, and so that would be, we would, that's why we're recommending that, to be customer service friendly and to address those concerns. But yeah, the way a C C A works is everyone's automatically opted in and you can opt out and that's what we want.
How, how will the citizens be notified that, that, hey, we're, we're starting a program and you're in, if you don't want in?
That's part of the one point five million dollars, there's a large quarter, a large portion of that money.
The answer, quite a bit of outreach needs to happen.
Yeah, yeah, you know, with all the outreach we do with streetlights, it's gonna pale in concern to all the outreach we're gonna do to form a C C A.
So, let me put this scenario. Um, those that decide to opt in, um, because of the. Idea that their rates will go lower. What if the opposite happens, their rates go higher than Edison for those that didn't opt in? Then suddenly you have a bunch of people opting out, and then ultimately, what happens to the program? Um, then we gets, we have to pay.
Bill's gotta get paid.
Right, but then we, the city, will be responsible for paying those bills that are really generating revenue. Because that could also happen if the rates go higher than Edison, and who knows, it, it may not be the case, but. Given the way that rates are going up with Edison, uh, and if the opposite happens. Then the bills have to get paid and we don't have the revenue, then is there a scenario of the city going bankrupt? Because of the program?
Raise rates.
In theory, yeah, with the city would have to raise rates. Um, in theory, it's a separate agency from the ci- uh, city, so. In theory, the city shouldn't go bankrupt if the C C A fails. Um, the Public Utilities Commission is, I believe it's a Public Utilities Commission, is requiring a hundred sixty thousand dollar bond. So that if it just suddenly collapses and fails overnight, they can go to Edison and say, hey, you need to take care of everyone now. And Edison needs to be able to do that. Um, there's also a resource adequacy requirement where there's some additional funding that would have to, um. Have to be put aside for these kind of extreme emergencies. But then, of course, with how much money the city would invest in it, if the city hasn't generated enough revenue to. Make back that money that's invested in it, it's all lost and there may be some additional losses to the city fiscally if that would to occur.
So then, would there be any penalties from C C E A for cities having to terminate a program? Has that conversation happened or not yet, is there be any?
The way, the way I understand is, um, let's assume that we just. One day, we just, the city council decides, you know what, this isn't working, we wanna dissolve the C C A. That, then the C C E A or Cal Choice, they've procured energy for an entire year on our behalf. And so, there will be some fees that we would have to pay to Cal Choice to leave them whole, because now. They've procured a, a significant amount of energy that's not gonna be put to use. So, yeah, there will be, like I said, there will be some financial penalties.
And that's part of the agreement or that's part of the language that is gonna be written in the C C E A?
I believe so, and, and if, even if we join the county's C C A program, it's the same thing. The county saying, hey, we're going to do everything on your behalf, we're gonna procure energy on your behalf, right?
Is this an annual thing where they go, hey, it's time to re-up and you have to re-sign up every year, every three years, or it's just forever?
It's forever until we say we want it to stop, it's just automatically going to renew. And we, we obviously, unless there's something catastrophic and overnight we have to stop it. There would be a wind-down period where it wouldn't be a, oh, you know, we just changed our mind, so, starting tomorrow, everyone's back with Edison. Wouldn't quite work that way unless there was a catastrophic failure and all of a sudden there was no money, et cetera.
Often does the rate adjustment occur?
Yeah, here annually, but if there's an emergency, it may happen sooner depending on what happens in the energy market.
And that rate has to be set by the council?
It would, it would have to be set by the council, yes. We wouldn't have the ability to change rates as we see fit.
Well, we'll, we'll have questions for, uh, Jason when he comes up. Uh, this, um. Proposed resolution, uh, calls for one point five million from the general fund. Uh, to this particular fund. But we don't have to, from what I understand, we can go with the lockbox and that would be five hundred thousand, and that would be the amount we'd be voting in?
Well, that would be for that two point five million that we are anticipating to meet in the future. The one point five million hasn't changed, it's a two point five million for the next fiscal year. Where if you choose to go with this, the, uh, this way of, of, um. Of deferring the payments and waiting for the revenue to come in and then paying the payments to the generator. Then it would only be five hundred thousand dollars for the lockbox, it could be less, it depends on what the Public Utilities Commission decides.
It can be as low as two hundred thousand?
That's what other, uh, C C As have seen, but they're significantly smaller than the city of Palmdale, so. That's why we're saying it's two hundred thousand to five hundred thousand dollar range.
What's the population of Pico Rivera?
That information I don't have on hand, um.
Google is your friend.
Probably about forty thousand. And that makes a difference in terms of the amount that gets put into the lockbox?
We have a significant energy load, uh, because really, we're not looking at population, we're looking at energy load. And so, even with cities that have, uh, similar, uh, populations. The energy load could be higher or lower depending on how much commercial, uh, how much manufacturing they have. Um, if it's a coastal community, they're not using their air conditionings as much, air conditioning as much as we do during the summer. There's several factors that change the load depending on the city.
Okay, so, what you're saying is, if we put five hundred thousand into the lockbox. We still have to vote in the one point five million, is that what you're saying? Okay, now, now the budget that was presented by the Cal Choice was one point three three nine.
Right.
Did, did we get a breakdown on that? Is that reflected in the same kind of breakdown as you have here from the city?
Not in the kind of breakdown that we had where we have specific accounts that we put it, we would put it into. They pref- they prepared a pro forma for us and in the pro forma, they've outlined a cost, but. Um, also along with those costs, they've, uh, anticipated revenue for the next fiscal year for all the activities that will occur in June. And so, they, it, it would be very, uh, we could ask them to kind of. Accommodate that one point three million into the accounts that we would establish for forming the, the C C A, but they haven't done that for us.
But we also got a proposed budget, uh, in the December report of six hundred and twenty-one thousand. Which was, uh, provided to us by C C E A, why is it so, why is there such a discrepancy? Between six hundred and twenty-one thousand that was suggested in December and now we're going to one point five million?
Uh, well, um, I believe Cal Choice would probably be better in explaining that and. Again, it's, uh, just forming a C C A is difficult and if you'll notice in that staff report, we were even saying. It's kinda hard for us to pinpoint exactly how much the cost will be, we, we saw one cost factor in one area, we saw another in another, and then we were saying. But in general practice, most jurisdictions have told us it's about a million dollars to form a C C A.
And that's been the experience with the other five jurisdictions that are in it?
I couldn't tell you for sure, uh, Cal Choice could probably better answer that question than I could. I wouldn't wanna misrepresent what's been going on in those other C C As.
Okay, maybe we can get them to answer some questions.
Yeah, if the council so chooses, we have representatives from Cal Choice here.
Right, uh, did you wanna continue? Uh, I think you got yourself to the bottom of page four.
Let's see where, I've got so much paperwork here, so, yeah, and so. So, oh, also what we pointed out is that if we were to do this one point five million dollar interfund loan. That, uh, we would affect the amount of general fund reserves that we have. And it would, uh, it would go down to about, um, I believe a nineteen percent. Reserve, and if we were to decide to have that two point five million dollars to secure it. Then it would dip down to about sixteen percent, I believe, and, um, sixteen percent. And so, we're, uh, we outlined, uh, the impacts it would have to the general fund reserve.
But I thought it was gonna be less now because it's not two million dollars anymore, so instead of being sixteen.
Yeah, and si- instead of, uh, instead of, uh, four million, it's now one point five plus an additional point five, so two million dollars. So, that's what the supplemental information is about where we, it would, you know, we would still dip down into about a seventeen per, uh, nineteen percent. And, um, maybe it'll impact it a little bit more with that additional five hundred thousand. And the return on investment will be a year sooner than anticipated as well.
So, the, the percentage that's allocated to, um, the reserve fund right now, what is that? Where, this would take us down to nineteen, where's it coming from?
General fund reserve.
Yeah, I understand that, but what's the percentage level now?
Percentage?
Twenty more? Twenty percent, so it'd be going down to. To nineteen, possibly eighteen, so we're talking about a difference of about one and a half to two percentage points.
Right.
Subtracted from the reserve. I see.
But the money would still be in the reserve, provided it's not, it's not spent. But it could potentially be spent to have the pro- the program successful.
Right, the, the one point five, I mean, there's contingency money and so forth in there, so we're looking for budget authority. Uh, we won't necessarily, we, we're not gonna hire staff right at the beginning, we're gonna get closer to implementation before we, uh, make those kind of calls. And so, uh, while we're looking for budget authority for the whole year, we're not gonna spend that kind of money. Um, so it, it won't be in the general fund reserve, it'll be in an enterprise fund, but it'll sh- still show up in our annual financial reports and so forth. Uh, and then, e- each year we'll be looking, and the following year we'll see, well, how much did we actually spend, do we have enough for the lockbox without. Dipping any further, you know, those kind of things, and so we'll, we'll know as we go through this.
So, the, two council meetings back, when we took action to loan five million dollars from the general fund to the parks. Uh, we were, what, what was the percentage of the, um, general fund, twenty-five percent?
We were at about.
Okay.
From thirty, or. Yeah.
So, we were at thirty percent, without five million dollar loan, we went down to nineteen, twenty percent. Then this one point five brings us down to nineteen percent, and it will bring it down to eighteen percent with the two million dollars. So essentially, what we would be doing is decreasing the general fund, fund, the reserves from thirty percent to eighteen percent. Hoping that this becomes a successful program to bring it back, uh, in twenty twenty-one to nine, to twenty percent.
That's correct, and then with the park fees, I mean, it's a, it's a separate item, but that, you know, we're looking, we got. The authority to spend five hundred thousand of that, so the four point five million will still be sitting in, in the park fee fund. Uh, and, you know, the hope certainly is that we never have to tap that, that housing starts and, and everything works out, but. We do have at least the authority that if we wanna move forward with parks, we can, we have, you know, the time to make those decisions.
So then essentially, the general fund reserve kind of resembles the same, because we would not be spending that money all at once. It's only gonna be reduced once the money gets spent for the parks, and depending how much money, hopefully that, um, reserves or. Park fee revenues come in.
Right.
And that this.
You just reduce those?
Yeah, which, which is reduced, and if this program, um, pays for itself in twenty twenty-one. Then we would have the reserves that we have now.
Correct.
However, there's a big risk of that happening, because this enterprise program. Um, you know, I, I'll have, I'll have questions for the representatives when, when they get here and ask those questions. Um, but looking at the experience with other cities that have been successful from what we are told. Uh, and Lancaster being successful with the way they manage the program. Um, but we are at a risk of not recouping, uh, if something were to happen to the economy. Why? Because we're taking money from the reserves in the general fund. Um, but I'll, I'll last, I'll last the questions to the reps when they come up here.
Okay.
So, in conclusion, what we were pointing out is, um. That if the council feels that they want to move forward with the C C A program and have it op- operational by June of twenty twenty. What they would have to do right now is to, um, adopt resolution number C C two thousand nineteen dash zero two nine. A resolution authorizing an interfund loan of one point five million dollars from general fund reserves to the community trace aggregation fund. And at the same time, approve our proposed budget for the, for the startup of a C C A program. And if, i- if they, if they pass that resolution, then we would move on to item number five point two. Which would be in agreement with Cal Choice for the startup of that C C A program.
Okay.
So, do you have any additional, oh, sorry, I guess I'm supposed to read this, so. So again, if you pass a resolution, the resolution is resolution number C C two thousand nineteen dash zero two nine. A resolution of the city council of the city of Palmdale authorizing an interfund loan of one point five million dollars from general fund reserves. To the community trace aggregation fund.
Okay, so, do we have, uh, I understood that we, we got a certain amount of information back from Rancho Mirage. Were we able to get any other information from the other people that are currently in the program right now, on their, on what their experience is?
Unfortunately, uh, uh, to this point, I've made calls. And, uh, I've asked them to call me back because I had questions about their C C A program. Haven't heard back, I've only heard back from Rancho Mirage and the staff person at the city of Lancaster who's running the C C A program.
Maybe Cal Choice has answers to those questions?
Uh, they should.
Did you also reach out to Apple Valley and Peak Rivera and the other five cities?
Well, it's, it's five total that are currently members, including the city of Lancaster, and I have reached out to the others, but only. Rancho Mirage got back to me, and our conversation at that time was limited to staffing levels, because we. Had no idea how staff-intensive it would be and they gave us feedback, but they're a much smaller community than we are. And, um, they're, they have different types of residents compared to our residents, I'm not. I'm not saying anything bad, ill about their residents or our residents, but just their residents are different from ours, and so. We had to make some judgment calls based on that.
Different usage and things like that would be occurring out there than, than here?
Uh, well, they're significantly smaller than us, so, yeah, they're, um, I don't know how much commercial and manufacturing they have and. I can imagine, though, though their residential bills are much higher than ours, because, um. uh, although we get, we get quite a bit of heat ourselves, uh, it probably doesn't reach the temperatures Rancho Mirage has.
Okay.
All right, anybody else got any other questions?
On the power purchase agreement, uh, with, did I hear you say that the, uh, county of Los Angeles at this point, that, that approach isn't, uh, existent? That's, you had some further discussions with them and they pretty much, uh, shut that down at least this, this time.
Yeah, uh, right now, uh, no one's really associating themselves with non-renewable energy. So to do a long-term agreement, no matter how much sense it makes, in our opinion, they want to pursue renewables and storage. They're not really looking for non-renewables. So no one's looking to put their name on a long-term non-renewable energy agreement. So they didn't show a lot of interest in doing a fifteen-year power purchase agreement for the power plant. They're more interested in doing, um, more like five or ten-year agreements for renewable energy.
All right. Jason, got some comments on this?
I don't know if I have many comments, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm Jason Col, I'm the executive director of Cal Choice and the city manager of Lancaster. Um, just a clarification, what Cal Choice is asking or what needs to get done tonight is simply an agreement with Cal Choice for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, and at a subsequent meeting, a hundred thousand dollar bond to pay the CPUC. So as relates to the one point five million dollars, the costs that are expected in the, in that portfolio and in that, in that budget, don't come in until January of two thousand twenty. So the, you know, the advance of these funds now are, I won't call them unnecessary, there may be internal policies that are required, but from Cal Choice's point of view and our recommendation, um, to, to get moving forward, to get you to the phase of implementation, um, that's a hundred and sixty thousand dollar contract with Cal Choice and that's it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And that, and that bond is, is, that's, that bond is with, uh, is a PUC bond, correct?
Correct.
Um, how many times has your staff and our staff met to discuss this program? Have you guys had constant meetings face-to-face since we, uh, la- a year, year and a half ago, we approved that contract, uh, for the study? Has there been any meetings between your staff and our staff?
I wouldn't call them regular meetings, but I know they're in contact with not only our staff, but also our consulting group.
Like in face-to-face, call, phone conferences?
Uh, we provided the new pro forma, we provided a previous pro forma, and then we provided the new pro forma as it relates to two years down the road. If you recall, in December two thousand seventeen, we had a pro forma that we delivered. And then most recently, for your previous council meeting, we delivered a new and updated pro forma in two thousand nineteen that outlaid, that laid out all the, the numbers we're talking about today.
When I, when I looked at the staff report, I had a concern with the negative number that was shown on staff report. So I went over to your website and pulled some, uh, pages from your CAFR. And from what I understand on page, uh, one fifty-two, where it talks about the creation of the, uh, three different entities, the Lancaster Power Authority, Lancaster Choice Energy and the Cal Choice California Choice Energy Authority. Um, from what I read on the staff report, look at your CAFR based on the, the mention of the, uh, CCEA. Uh, it looks like in two thousand twelve, that's when you did a bond for the, uh, solar, uh, farms to, uh, energize this program. Uh, but then looking at the different years, it looks like it was not until two thousand sixteen or seventeen that the Lancaster Choice Energy took effect. Is that correct? Am I looking at this correct?
Uh, the Lancaster Power Authority is the, uh, is an agreement we have with our school districts in which we built solar behind the meter. And where we funded that and own that as a city and sell the energy directly to the school district. It has nothing to do with Lancaster Choice Energy or California Choice Energy.
Okay.
In you, uh, in your meetings between our two staffs, um, was the discussion had between the one hundred and sixty thousand dollars plus a one hundred thousand dollar bond as opposed to the one point five million that our staff is indicating? Did you guys have a discussion about that difference?
I can confirm with Barbara, but I don't, I don't think we recommended one point five million dollars to be loaned at this point in time.
But did you have that rec, that discussion, uh, between our staffs?
Yes or no, or?
Well, we, the pro forma shows over between now and launch.
Well, let me come up, just let me get you on there. Besides, I might, if I turn my hearing aids up to hear you, then these guys are blasting, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm Barbara Boswell and I am with, uh, California Choice Energy Authority. I'm one of their consultants. I was also city of Lancaster finance director at the time that Lancaster launched their CCA. Um, we did, in the pro forma that was prepared, we, uh, did a pro forma that takes from this point and then, um, projects the costs for implementation as well as out ten years. And looks at revenues based on current Southern California Edison rates because we do discount off of Southern California rates, current rates, and then what's projected. And then looks at the current energy market, looks at what the cost of power is if you were to contract today, and also looks at the forward price of power to determine what the costs will be anticipated over the next ten years. The one point three million dollars is the cost to go from today, which is, uh, we need, uh, to engage a contract to pre, to perform the implementation services part, to do the, um, to, to continue to do, uh, regulatory reporting, to assist with, uh, setting up websites, do all of the steps required to begin to launch the CCA. And then the hundred thousand dollar bond with the PUC. And then starting in January of twenty twenty, the city would need to start paying what's cost, uh, Mr. Lucia mentioned, resource adequacy, which is a, um, a, a product or a contract that CCAs are required to enter into. Rules have changed that now CCAs have to begin paying that even before they begin serving customers. They have to pay it in the year they're going to launch. So included in that one point three, we would start having to make payments that we estimated in that, um, included in that one point three million. But, um, the one point five includes other costs, including, um, staffing and additional costs that, um, Palmdale feels is necessary as explained by the staff.
The, the approximate budget, uh, that were, was given to us in December was of a six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars.
This, the seven hundred thousand dollar difference is mainly the change in the rule that requires CCAs to begin purchasing or procuring resource adequacy before they begin serving customers. We're actually in the process of, um, working with energy suppliers to, uh, assist with, um, that requirement to defer those payments and not have to make those. But we don't have anything concrete yet. But that's the difference between the six hundred and twenty-one is the, and the one point three is that new requirement. That's the resource adequacy.
So let me see if I understood correctly, then this one point three, one point five million is to procure, procure the energy from twenty twenty on for twenty twenty-one? Because we won't be, according to the staff report, we won't be in effect until May or June of twenty twenty, twenty twenty. So the one point three or one point five, that's to start purchasing the power that we're gonna sell our residents?
It includes, uh, all of the technical, um, startup costs. It includes, um, staff time to support. It includes developing notices to send to the customers, marketing and outreach to the customers, um, developing a website, um, all of the, the, what you would need to start up a business is all included in that. The, um, energy product is the seven hundred thousand dollars is the new, new part. That's the difference between the six twenty-one and the, and the one point three million.
So seven hundred thousand dollars to purchase the power that will be provided to the residents from twenty twenty-seven to twenty twenty.
Is that the purchaser, was that just the, that's the resource adequacy?
It's for the resource adequacy, it's not the energy.
We're not moving any electrons with that, right?
Right. It's not, it's not energy, it's resource adequacy. It's a, it's an insurance, um, basically it's insurance. Uh, Mr. Lucia, um, mentioned that, you know, there, there's a concern about, you know, there not being sufficient power plants, you know, standing at the ready if, if, you know, energy, uh, load peaks. Well, resource adequacy is that insurance policy that is required of, of all load-serving entities, not just CCAs, but Southern California Edison, all of any municipal utility. You have to buy a contract or pay a, for a plant to sit idle, um, that in case the CAISO or the California, um, independent system operators needs to call on them to energize and, and put power on the grid, that they're at the ready. And that's that insurance policy to ensure that there is sufficient power.
Okay. Any other questions for Jason? Any other public comment?
My understanding is that Lancaster has generated revenues from this.
Correct. Um, we've been cash positive, uh, every year successfully, as well as all of our members. Um, and just as a background from CCAs, there are approximately four million customers now being served under CCAs. Um, to my knowledge, not one of those has failed as a CCA or has had issues with paying the bills or meeting the rate coverage or meeting the rate requirements.
What about the savings, uh, to the rate payers?
Um, they differ. Each jurisdiction has their own priorities and, um, their own, uh, uh, goals that they set. So in some cases, some cities have said, we want to be a hundred percent renewable, um, and they've chosen to have a higher rate than their, than their competitor. Um, other cities have chosen, some of our cities have chosen a much, much lower rate, um, to give their savings back to their customers.
All right, and I understand that if we approved this, then, um, the, uh, board of directors for the CCA is your city council.
Correct.
Um, we'd be able to set policy, but we would be bound by, um, contracts and other decisions of that sort, uh, that your board of directors would, would be making.
Um, the only contract you'd be bound by is the contract you enter with our board, which is the Cal Choice board. Um, in that contract outlines powers, duties, and authorities, of which the powers, duties, and authorities are you choose, how, what you procure, how much you procure, how you procure it, where you procure it, and the rates and what you set for it. The five, the four, the five members that we have, including Lancaster, um, they have yet to have to present to our board a decision that they have made. They make all the decisions. We are basically operating your CCA on your behalf.
Okay. So then what decision-making power do we have? Just setting up the rates for our residents?
You have, you have all the deci- decision-making authority within the jurisdiction. Um, so within your CCA. So you can control your rates. You can control your energy type that you want to purchase, whether it be a hundred percent renewable, eighty percent renewable, whatever it is, you control, you know, even if you wanted to buy it locally, you have, you control, I want to buy a so- solar plant here in, in Palmdale. You can do that. Um, those authorities rest with you. You can decide to hire staff, you can decide to implement programs, you can decide to retrofit your LEDs, you can decide how you expend your revenues associated with it. So you have all the decision-making authority associated with your CCA. We're merely managing it collectively as five cities and hopefully eleven cities in the future.
Okay, we, we had a report back in December that the Lan- Lancaster council, let us say the board of directors of the CCA, uh, would be selecting the CC, the CCEA contractors. And the selections made by the city would be within the services selected by Lancaster city council. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's, the one, one decision is the operations, who operates, and at this point, we've done an RFP, selected Bayshore to do the operations, um, as well as PEA, who does some of the other data analytics and things of that nature. And those decisions do rest, but they're typically through RFPs.
And so what impact does that have on, on the decisions that we have to make?
Um, it, the cost of operation is, so there's a cost of operation associated with that. Um, so Cal Choice will set that budget for cost of operation, and that cost of operation is distributed pro rata share to each of our members.
So what is, what is the revenue that the city of Lancaster has been able to gain from this?
Um, we don't gain any revenue from the program. What we do is we benefit from the lowering of the total aggregate costs associated with the services. So if we were operating at a million dollars by ourselves, we've added five, four other members in there. We share that million dollars, so our revenue, our, our expense goes down, but the operating cost for each member also goes down. So we, we share the operations cost by pro rata.
And so what does that benefit, translated to dollars?
Um, if I looked at the, if I looked at the number, the operations went from two point four, or, well, this is with the five members. It went from one point four to around eight hundred thousand, I think, of operational costs. With the other six members, we anticipate that lowering as well. But the benefit is that lowers for everybody, so their operational costs are, are shared evenly.
So then all the members help pay for the solar renewable energy revenue bond that you are entering to two thousand twelve?
No, the two thousand twelve bond has nothing to do with, there's no, no connection whatsoever. That's the Lancaster Power Authority.
There's no connection whatsoever in the solar renewable energy revenue bonds?
Not the two thousand twelve, no. We have not issued any revenue bonds associated with Lancaster Choice Energy or Cal Choice. The bonds were the construction of the solar fields that are attached to our school district's properties, yeah.
So, okay. Well, let me read this from your CAFR on page sixty-two. Two thousand twelve A solar renewable energy revenue bonds. On May seventeen, twenty twelve, the Lancaster Power Authority issued twenty-six point eight million dollars of two thousand twelve A solar renewable ener- energy renewable bonds. These bonds were used to finance a repayment for specified supply of electricity from a seven thousand three hundred nineteen DC KW capacity system.
So that's one of the schools, though?
That's one, that has no relationship whatsoever to California Choice Energy Authority or Cal Choice.
Okay. All right, anybody else for Jason at this time? Standby, we may have more.
I'm here.
Okay. Uh, anybody else from the public at this time?
You gotta drill. Uh, my name is Barry Severs. Um, I'd like to ask, um, there's a lot of money being, uh, talked about here. We have no guarantees. We have no real income from all this. All this is been expenditures. We're, are we going to get what we're paying for? Uh, the last time was the streetlights. That turned out to be something that was good and then bad. Is the grid gonna fall apart? Is Edison gonna go and, uh, go bankrupt?
I think, uh, oh, I've been cut off. Yeah, nothing. We, we're here, yeah, we're good.
Um, w- we have no guarantees of nothing. We, we just have a lot of money going out. And we can ill afford wasting money. Mr. Partey, he's, he's did his best to keep things together and so have we, Steve, but, you know, eh. I want to hear some, are we gonna get a giant discount? Or, you know, what benefit is it to our public? And I don't, I don't hear that. And going with Lancaster, I feel myself, um, is that going to be a big enough thing to actually, um, see some kind of discount in our, our electric bills? I know mine's eighty-five dollars a month, and I live in an apartment with two dogs and me. And, you know, that's just, it gives every month that go, it's bigger and bigger. So I'd like to see it kind of go smaller and smaller. But I'm asking you guys, wh- where is the benefit to this? I, I, I don't see it. I just see us putting a lot of money out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any else here? People sitting out here for a reason, I'm assuming. Yeah, it could be it.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am Kathy McLaren. And tonight I'm here representing the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers and the National Electrical Contractors Association. Um, we work with many of these cities since we work with all of Los Angeles County. We have been on, on the ground, working with Lancaster, also working with Pico Rivera, City of Commerce, and talking with, with the county. The way I look at it is this is something that's only for you guys to make it what it is. Like them, they chose to do something to help out the schools. I know we've talked about different stuff, and if we could help- I know we've talked about different stuff, and if we could help out the schools pay less for, let's say that you guys decided to do this, and we could offer them less that they'd pay for that, that maybe we could help them pay for wifi or something else. I just feel that this is the wave of the future, this is the way things are transitioning. And this is transitional technology. And this city, I feel you guys think out of the box, you're willing to do new and different things. Everything we do has a risk. But working with the city of Lancaster, they have some experience. They have many people that have looked at it and chose, chose to join them. It's our neighbor, it's our partner. I can only see us doing better things and partnering with them. And it does give you where you are your own entity, and you make the choice of what your rates are gonna be and what you choose to do with it. And working with you guys in our Joint Powers Authority, I can only see that maybe we could use this for our Recycled Water Authority, or the Water Districts may be able to join this. If we, Lancaster and Palmdale have this all together and we can save energy and everything, we might be able to take care of this whole region, that if anything happened, there was a major earthquake, that we were self-sufficient, and that's what I look for. So I am all for this. I hope you move forward on doing this. I know there's a lot of things you have to work out, but we've talked to Pico Rivera, and I know Lancaster will help, we'll be here to help you. So, I'm all for it.
Thank you. Ben, in a lacking a power plant here, uh, catastrophic circumstances, where's our power end up coming from then?
Uh, that's tough to say, especially since, um, depending on how catastrophic, we might be cut off from everyone. Um, we do have some local renewable energy, but no storage either, so even that power would be intermittent, and so I, I don't know where the nearest power plant is, that would be able to serve us if there was a major catastrophe. I know if you go into the LA Basin, there's quite a few, but if there was a major catastrophe, we would probably be cut off from them.
Yeah, I remember during Northridge, we had, um, DWP kind of went all, it all went down. Uh, when you looked across the valley, Burbank was still lit up. Funny how that one worked. So, alright.
Can this resolution be modified to read that instead of a one point five million dollar um, transfer from the general fund, it instead be the one hundred and sixty thousand plus uh, whatever it takes to pay for the bond of a hundred thousand dollars?
Let me pay for the staff though.
So, yeah, let me go over that list a little bit. So the one sixty is what the, uh, Cal-Choice needs. And the one fifty is the independent operator fee that we have to put out.
Which page are we gonna be on?
I'm on page, uh, four.
Page one.
Um, I think the staff time and administrative costs, we could probably reduce. Um, the marketing required noticing, we have to notice the public before, in, in multiple ways before we put this out, in both mailers and so forth. Uh, and then the legal costs. Uh, so these all fit within what was quoted as in the pro forma, um, under the one point three. There's a large contingency component. Uh, I think part of that is, I don't know if that's the RA fee, or it's just a a big chunk of contingency money. And so I, I think we could reduce it down below the one point five, but three ten is not gonna get us there, uh, because of the noticing costs and the staffing costs. Uh, and again, this is just budget authority, it's not necessarily, and once we firm up these numbers, we can always move money back from the uh, the, into the reserve from this fund. Um, but we're feeling that between now and June twenty of next year, um, that we would spend a, a good chunk of this money, particularly if we have to put up the RA fee before we implement. Uh, and then if there is money left over, it could go towards the lockbox money.
Well, so the, the two things that, that concern me is, as we start dipping down into our reserves like that, that's one thing. The other one is that, um, I've been up to Sacramento a few times this year, they made it more than abundantly clear, they're not gonna let the not gonna let the public utilities go bankrupt. And that they keep trying to readjust this PCIA to, to level the playing field. So where people were getting like a five percent savings before, now we're seeing it down to one percent or, or you know, so the average of fifty cents under bill. So I, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm just trying to reconcile in my head where the, um, I know it, it all, it all sounds great, that to be, you know, um, we're in control of our own destiny. How many guys are on the sanitation board right now? Cause I'm getting the calls right now about the rate, and it's ninety-nine cents, so. Those aren't comfortable calls, ladies and gentlemen. We haven't even started the hearings on those. So I, I mean, I'm just I, I really want to see, a few years ago, we were, we were looking to jump on this. I'm, I'm just really, I'm just really concerned that with the, uh, um, with the, with all these PUC, um, level, um, leveling of the playing fields, um, for the, for the generated savings, somebody needs to help me with that, so.
Fifty cents savings.
Yeah, so I mean.
It's what, one and a half percent to one percent is the current estimation, right? It started out at about five percent savings, and it's down to about one, one percent, according to the report we received.
You asking me? Yeah, I mean, you ought to be asking them. I'm, I'm still asking the questions.
Based on the pro forma we were provided, uh, we're looking at a, a one percent reduction in the commodity costs, so just the, the power generation, not in the overall bills. That's what gets a little confusing in the staff report, because at one point we're talking about the bill, at one point we're talking about the average household, and one point we're talking about the commodity. Uh, so, like, when Ben led off, he talked about the, the distribution and administrative costs of Edison is about equal to, uh, for the average household, uh, about equal to the commodity cost. And so that's where we're taking that one percent savings on the commodity and saying, well, you're gonna save about a half percent on your overall bill. Uh, and then applying it across the board, uh, you're looking at a fifty cent a month savings. If you look at the, the pro forma and the, the power purchase of about thirty-six million, a one percent savings on that power purchase is about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And so you take that and spread it across the city with businesses and so forth, uh, and you end up about that, near that same number on average. And so, um, those are some of the things we did to kind of figure out what is the, the positive impact on the, on the average resident. Obviously, some are gonna say, you use more power, you're gonna, because it's a percentage, you're gonna have, you show some more savings. Um, but then there's also, like with Edison, you have tiering structures. And so if you use more power, you might pay more for, depending on what tier you hit and so forth. The council's gonna be the one responsible for setting all those different power tiers as well as we go through this.
So, so if I'm a citizen sitting at home watching this, and I, you guys move forward, and I decide to sign up for this or not, not opt out, two years from now, let's say I have a seventy-five dollar electric bill right now. Two years from now, what can I expect for that electric bill? What would it be?
I couldn't tell you.
Anybody?
Couldn't tell you two years from now. I mean, we can estimate the savings of one percent, so you'll be seventy-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh,
But SCANS costs more than to mail the bill, you know?
Yeah.
But you know, keeping this in what has been happening with Edison, you're paying seventy-five dollars now. Edison's rate is gonna go up next year, maybe in six months, and maybe again. So essentially what you're looking at, your seventy-five dollar bill, if you opt out, it's not gonna be seventy-five dollars because Edison will increase it. Uh, so the, the idea for this CCA, or the, uh, program is to address various question. Yeah, we're talking about investing money, but the general idea is to save residents and business owners' money.
Right, but we're still, we're still purchasing power. That power will also go up.
Well, it's, it's true.
Depends on your, your purchase source.
Right, and what kind of, of costs that we as a city put on, on the program, right? Cause that's gonna be shared out to the rate payers.
But we could choose to buy the program.
Fifty cents a month savings, I don't see a benefit to the public.
Well, what, so explain to me, um, somebody, um, I, I want to, I want to see both lanes on this road right now, okay? So, explain to me the trigger points if we move forward tonight versus if we don't move forward tonight, what are the next windows of opportunity, and how does that occur? I think we, I think we need to understand that.
I think that was a good Ben question, and maybe backed up with.
Okay, so, um, I guess we have two scenarios. Either you, you pass this resolution, and then we would move to five point two, which obviously you would approve also. And starting tomorrow, we would work with Cal-Choice to start uh, to do the process to start off, start up the CCA. There will be some costs that will be encouraged more immediately, there will be some costs that will be after the fact. Um, but we would end up starting the CCA in June of twenty twenty, based on the current timeline. And so then in June of twenty twenty, after significant outreach and all of the background work that needs to be put into it, uh, nothing will change. It's not like you're gonna flip your switch on June first, twenty twenty, and all of a sudden there's a delay or anything of that sort. Everyone's still gonna receive the energy they're getting. But what will happen is, if someone gets a bill in the middle of June, they're gonna see that for half the month, that now there's this additional page outlining the generation costs and their participation in the Palmdale CCA. And most of the other people will receive it in July, where they're gonna see a different bill, where there's gonna be about one or two additional pages. And they'll, and where they're now paying the CCA for the generation of their energy, and they'll still be paying Edison for the transmission of the energy. If you choose to not pass the resolution right now, then you obviously cannot approve item number five point two because it's not budgeted. And, um, we can continue our conversations, but we'll end up having to wait an, an entire year. And so it would be May or June of twenty twenty-one, where the Palmdale CCA would start up, if we chose to start up then.
So, uh, uh, my understanding is, so far, my understanding is that there's been no city anywhere that's joined up for one of these that has not generated enough money to pay their own bills.
So far, we have not seen that. Uh, there's, yeah, we haven't seen any CCA fail. Um, of course, it all depends on policy where it comes to savings. Some have been saving significant money. But with these changes in the PCIA, those savings are slowly diminishing. Some actually have been paying more for their energy because the city councils decided on behalf of their residents that they're only gonna provide a hundred percent renewable energy right off the bat.
Is, is there any guarantee written into this that a resident who signs up for this will never pay more than Edison?
That would have to be a council policy.
Um, cause if it's, if we're, if they're paying more for, for ours than for Edison, why would we even go forward with this? So is there any guarantee built into the system that prevents that from ever happening?
We, there, there's no way we can ever guarantee anything, but that's why, um, as Mr. Partey mentioned, we would recommend building up a reserve, so that if something catastrophic happened and our bills would exceed that of Edison's, hopefully we can use some of those reserves to offset those additional costs and to leave people on par or slightly lower than Edison.
So on a, on an enterprise program though, don't you operate that? I mean, you, 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 you could provide a certain amount of seed money or enter, in, inter-fund loan. But the enterprise, uh, um, zone or enterprise project, is it not supposed to be self-sustaining? And, uh, and then, uh, what it makes or doesn't make is, 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 is within, within its own bucket of cash, so to speak?
Right, we would, oh, our goal, if we were to run a CCA program, and, um, uh, I, I think everyone would agree is that first we would, uh, wanna generate some revenue so we can have that backup money to provide a subsidy in case there is ever a major catastrophe in the near future. But at the same time, pay off the loan that the city is loaning itself to form this enterprise fund. And for it to be a self-sufficient, self-sustaining project where the city will never have to use general fund money to subsidize the program.
I'd really like to see what Pico and those Rancho and Apple Valley and San Jacinto are, what their, what their experiences are. I'm not sure how long each, how long, do we know how long they've been operating, each one of these guys?
Um, Cal-Choice would probably better, uh, better outline that, but as I mentioned, they are running in the black, they're not running in the red, and they are realizing savings in comparison to their Edison bill. But unfortunately, with these, these changes to the PCIA, I can't say for sure, but I would imagine that those savings have been reduced because of those additional costs.
We know, we know some of those have. I mean, it's just a, I mean, PUC has made that very clear that, 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 that they're gonna try to make that less, um, uh, and less of an imbalance in there, but I'm just, I, I don't, I don't know, I'm, I'm curious, you know, what their, what their overall experience is here, how much they've had to loan in relationship to their general fund, how soon they're seeing that getting paid back. We got a lot of things coming down the pipe here, and I'm trying to figure out, you know, you know, where's this money get spent?
Get, get those questions answered, we'd have to wait here. Is that right?
Well, you wouldn't have to wait a year, but we would have to wait a year for implementation, yes. Because we would have to come back.
Stop us from getting additional information and, and figuring this out.
Uh, well, in other words, if you wanted to wait to get that information before passing the resolution, uh, we wouldn't meet the April deadlines, to the best of my understanding, and so that's where you would have to wait a year. But if you passed it and said, well, we're gonna join for now, but we want staff to come back and do some additional research and let us know this additional information, uh, I can't guarantee we could get it to you in time for the April council meeting. It will probably have to be May at the earliest, and we can provide you with that energy, uh, that, that, sorry, that information. And then from there, you can decide whether you'll continue on or you'll repeal the resolution, or I, I don't know exactly how that would work.
I see that. When is it happening cash-wise, depending on those other options?
The, the adoption of the resolution just sets aside money into a different fund, so it doesn't spend the money. The, uh, getting to the agreement, uh, with Choice Energy, um, is what actually, you know, creates a PO, creates an invoice and so forth, and we actually start spending money. And so the rest, there, there's one piece is the budget authority, um, is important, but it's not as important as entering to the agreement on time. And the next step being, we gotta come back in April, on, on April second, and adopt the ordinances that are necessary to meet all the different required timelines under the, under the PUC. Uh, if we miss those deadlines, one, entering into the agreement is just to release Lancaster, do all the work that needs to go into, uh, the reports that uh, Choice Energy needs to do to, um, create the reports for the PUC, and get those, that part of it going. The other part, uh, you know, the notifications, all those other expenditures and staffing costs are further down the road. Um, the two big timelines are one, getting this agreement going, and the second one being uh, doing the ordinance required, ordinances and so forth on April second. If we miss those deadlines, we lose a year.
That's six, that's six dollars. No, we're gonna take a break. I need to take a break, and I'll have a vice mayor here tonight. So, we'll be back in, take five minutes, okay? I've been trying to find a point where you can take a break. Jason, we're going back on the record.
Jason, we're going back on the record. Thank you for the five minutes. Richard had said he had a couple more questions for you here.
Yes, sir, there's been this discussion of uh. I guess the savings of fifty cents per household, but that I guess that that relates to whatever amount of money. A household is paying to begin with.
Correct.
Some are higher, some are lower, I suppose. Do you do you have any um? Any response to what's been discussed here by our staff to that issue?
Well, I think there's a couple of things to to clarify, as one, it it might it might well, it might as well, it could be fifty cents, I didn't do the calculation. But the pro forma we did was based on one percent savings, so the pro forma says it's one percent savings, your council chooses what the savings should be or could be or what you want it to be. It could be three percent, it could be ten percent, it could, the pro forma is just an opportunity for us to share with you what it looks like at one percent.
If this, then that.
If this, then that, right? Um, so that's all it is, right, um come January, that's gonna change, right, just as we talked about two years ago. When you were looking at before, it has changed since then, right, the P C I A, as the mayor mentions. It's also the Edison has been an under collection for the last year and a half as it relates to their rates, so their rates skyrocketed this year on the generation side or will in March. So regardless of the P C I A, our margin has increased substantially over that period of time. So every every every.
Hold their rates low, you think?
They did, absolutely, they did. Um and they're went to the P C and they're, I don't wanna say they're paying for it now, we're paying for it now. Um but yes, their their rates were artificially low and they had to go back and catch up um for the next future years. Um so regardless of whether it's fifty cents now or a dollar or a dollar fifty, you set that rate. The pro forma we did is just merely a one percent savings at an estimate, you can make it two, the pro forma changes. Come January, right, when your obligation to pay for R A, we will do another pro forma. To see what the energy markets are, see what the participated rates are for Southern California Edison, and it will change, right? But you you have an off ramp any moment in time, this the the decision you're making today. Zero, well, it costs you a hundred and sixty thousand and a hundred thousand dollar bond, that's it.
So you said then you will provide a pro forma every year to every city that participates in your C C A?
We do a rate setting process and a budget uh review.
Once a year?
Uh we do it every month.
Every month?
Yeah, cause every month their cash flow fluctuates and things change.
Where do you buy your um power from?
Multiple sources, yeah.
So say that if um I'm just thinking of the power plant becomes a reality, miracle happens and there is the demand. Can then Palmdale sell the power to you to distribute to every member of the C C A?
Um if you own the power plant and you were in charge of the energy and we needed to buy long term. Gas fired power, we could purchase it from you. We wouldn't be required to.
Well, the conversation has been that it's gonna be somewhere that they can steal.
Yeah, but they there's them or the county, either one of them seem like that's a.
I know, I know, but this could change because the demand could change any time. The the just the fact that they're changing the peak demand hours, that may change the the demand too.
Are they a game changer for everybody, I think we gotta see what's gonna be happening on that.
If you're waiting for if you're waiting for things to never change. The rates are gonna change and as it relates to identifying calling Pico and calling Rancho and everything else, I can tell you they're happy with our services. Two, really having trying to create a relationship between your city and their city will have no bearing whatsoever. Their their costs of purchase energy are different because they started differently, their P C I A is different because they started differently. Their cost of operation, their load for their load profile is different, so as much as you can look at how they've done, it has zero relationship upon.
So it's kinda interesting, but not real relevant?
Interesting and irrelevant.
So how much for the power that you're buying, do you think it's a hundred percent renewable? Does does it vary or is it a hundred percent?
It depends on the choice of the city, um in our case, we have a renewable component and then we also have a greenhouse gas free component.
Is this nationwide or just from we buy it from the state of California, we buy it nationwide, where where do we get the energy from?
Right, there are three categories of energy, they call them three buckets, bucket three, bucket two, and bucket one, um all of them bucket one and two are from California, generated in California or directly connected to California. Uh or maybe I have them backwards, it may be three and two, but um there are opportunities to purchase out of state, it's just a different pricing structure. Um but yeah, most of it, the the Cal ISO basically makes wants you to buy local, buy in state.
What about the opportunity uh as a revenue generator for the city of Palmdale, what comments do you have on that?
Um it's a direct relationship to your the rates you set um in the in the uh pro forma that we did for December of this this year or last year. Um there is a revenue source and I think over the ten year period, I think it ended up being a twelve thirteen million dollar revenue stream over the cumulative over that period of time. Um that's your revenue, okay, I mean, it's an enterprise fund, absolutely, but you can spend those 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 funds within that enterprise. To energy efficiency, to your employees, or to your employees, sorry, to your citizens. Um you know, rebates for electric car purchases, L E D retrofits, all the things energy related. I mean, it's no different than a water enterprise fund in that you can do things water related when you're water fund, I mean, there's. I mean, it's not, it's not complicated, right, and if there's if there's revenue there, you can spend it, you can put it in reserves, that's a wise decision, as Ben mentions. To put in reserves and protect against market fluctuations so that you can guarantee or potentially guarantee your rates. And you know, to Miss Benton Court's comments, you they can guarantee their rate will never be higher than Edison because they can opt out at any point. So if your rates go higher, they can opt out, um so they can guarantee their rate structure, so there's a lot of things here that, you know, this is. We're not putting them out on the moon, we're not breaking new ground, I mean, we have four million customers operating in the setting. Um it it is merely an opportunity for you to gain local control of your energy source. Um and use those and expend those expend those funds locally here. Like one thing that I I sense a lot of today that I hear is that what happens if it goes bad, what happens if this, what happens if something goes wrong, what happens if it goes right? Right, what happens if we succeed, right, and every city that we've worked with has succeeded. Every city that has done it up and down the state has succeeded, so the question should be, what do we do if we succeed? Um and at that point, then you can start creating programs, you can start identifying ways to incentivize business to locate here, you can do. You know, retrofit, you can clean the air, you can buy your power plant, you can, what whatever that positive thing is with that revenue, you control. And I think that's the key here, that's the key to the conversation, sorry to get emotional, I get on the soapbox, but I'm passionate about this stuff and. Um but there is opportunity here, um we have seen successes and you know, we can talk about what happens if. Um but at the end of the day, what happens if we succeed, I think we will.
When you say cities up and down the state, that you're not talking just about the C C E A cities, you're talking about cities in general that have.
Yeah, the four million customers are not our customers or Cal Choice's customers, this is, we're in Monroe, I mean, you go down the list, there's.
So uh as far as the experience has been for these cities up and down the state, all these different uh. Communities that are servicing four million customers, it's been it's been a positive experience for all of them.
That we know of, yes, we have not heard negative experience whatsoever, I mean, you might have the citizen comment, I can't opt out, or you're gonna get these comments, but. The for the vast majority of the citizens, it is working out, not only Lancaster, in every city we operate and every G P A that's operating up and down the state.
And you're monitoring um the success levels and so on of the different cities.
Yeah, we have a Cal, it's Cal C C A, it's a a membership organization that each of our members have and we we communicate with them regularly.
That's a that's a gal up in um, a lady up in uh.
Bethmore, yes.
Yeah, 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 okay, I've I've met with her.
Yeah, so we have a we have an organization very similar to League of California Cities that. Um you know, services these entities and you know, we are regularly fighting the battles that you talk about as risks. Um we are regularly defending ourselves as it relates to the services we provide and the benefits we provide, but yeah, it's been successful for all of them.
So what are the various budget trigger points here then?
Maybe maybe I can clarify that too, if you don't mind, so it's hundred and sixty today, a hundred thousand Tuesday, right, or next Tuesday would be April second. Um there is no need to spend any more money, um except for internal staff and if you want to hire new staff, that's that's your call. Um but from a Cal Choice perspective, you'd have no need to spend spend any money until January of two thousand twenty. In January two thousand twenty, you're required to then prepay for your R A, your resource adequacy. At that point, prior to that, right, um we commit to you that before you go down that next off ramp, right? We will have all the work done under this hundred and sixty thousand dollar contract. We will then be able to price energy and identify new pro forma, come back and say, here's what it looks like, here's what our prediction is for June.
When and when and when does, so again, we pay the R A and and we pay that R A in January.
Correct.
And that would be, what was the number we were talking about on that?
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred. And but prior to paying that, that's based on. The analysis of what the power purchase is going to yield. And and the cost on it, correct?
The the number is based on the amount of R A you purchase is based on your August peak. So that is based on an amount of energy that we we anticipate or historically you have used at the highest point in August. Of I think it's the previous year, whatever it might be, um that's what the R A is based on, so.
When do we get, when we get that analysis, how far ahead of January do we get that?
Um it I mean, we can do it, the closer you get to January, the the more accurate the numbers you're gonna get. Um if we did it for you next week, it's gonna be less accurate January, but we will come in sometime in December, I would anticipate. And coming in December will allow us to estimate what Edison's new rate structure is gonna be because they start coming out in November with their January rate adjustment. So we'll be able to see preliminary numbers from the rate adjustment and we wouldn't do anything until then anyway. Um and in fact, there's there's some predictability to that rate because they've actually set their new raise for an eighteen month period, so. Uh we have some visibility past that, so we'll we'll have a much more accurate number.
At what point does the marketing and the required notice then begin, uh after the ordinance is approved?
It's it's two, it's two months prior to launch, so it would be June, it's well, month, June is. Uh black month or dead month, and then the month before, you send out a notice in the month before, so it would be May or was it April, April, first of April.
Of next year.
Would be then, you need to start procuring energy and start delivering notices to your customers, things of that nature. But each of these have off, you know, each of these have off ramps, you can get off at any time. Um even up until, I mean, there was a desert, I wouldn't recommend this, there was a desert who opted to stop, you know, right when they were about ready to procure and launch, they said, no, we're stopping.
So uh essentially, it's a one hundred and sixty thousand plus a hundred thousand dollar bond, take a look.
Correct, and you will have all the information, you'll have all the documentation, you'll have all the ordinance, you'll have everything you need to launch.
And if we do that, then the money can go, if if we decided to take an off ramp, then the rest of the money is one point five billion, but go back into reserves.
Any other questions? Jason, this time?
Sorry, get a little emotional.
All right, Laura, what's your thoughts? So we're seeing that we've got um if we move forward at this point, we've got. We get next trigger is no- November. Next trigger point would be November. When we would see what Edison's projections are, rates.
Yeah, we November, December, we would get a report from.
And then this and then December, for 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 December, we would have some projections and. Based on that, then January is where we would.
That's where the big money starts to come in with, then you have to do the R A V. And then we would start the marketing and so forth, and so at that point, we'd start staffing up, and most of the money that we're talking about setting aside is for. At the end of the next fiscal year. Uh some of it will spend this year as part of mid year budget adjustment, uh the two sixty and then. The bulk of it'll be a big chunk in January, uh with the R A money and then. Uh the ramp up money as far as staffing, noticing, and all the other components of this.
What do you guys think?
Well, here's a deal, I don't see the fifty cents or the or the dollar as a big deal. I I think it's more of a cumulative thing. And um that if if we have the ability to move something forward. That has nothing, nothing happens, no income, there's some outlay initially. But the uh the income, I mean, it's it would be nice to be able to have. A uh uh an enterprise fund that you could use for some of these housing retrofits and things like this we've talked about. I mean, cause we 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 lost a lot of those over the years with the loss of redevelopment. Uh to be able to encourage more uh um rebates and stuff for the E V equipment and things of that nature. For the uh for the rate payers, um and and um. I I think it's interesting that out of all the cities we're looking at, I think we've only seen one that's dropped out.
But there's a whole lot that haven't dropped in.
Well, yeah, but but I'm thinking what the experience is.
Here's my, here's some of my thoughts is that, you know, I'm I'm not for big government and for me as a as a citizen, the less government I have in my life, the better. You know, and I I work for the government, so I mean, that's that's hard to say, but what what makes us think that we can actually do a better job and offer a better rate? Uh without creating this whole bureaucracy that we all fight against every day of our lives. So are we complicating it more by doing this for our citizens?
I think it, I think the question is, is where's where is where is the bureaucracy at? You know, is it? Or is it, or is it, you know, I'm sorry, is that? Yeah, yeah, well.
Well, you know, I gotta say, I I've I've never had a problem with Edison. I I'm happy with the bill that I have, I mean, I'm probably one of the few, I live alone, I have a small house, I'm never home, so. My my, you know, it's it's easy for me to say I don't have an issue, I don't have a family of five in a two story house. So I'm not the one to ask on this.
Based on the representations that have been made about the success of cities in terms of generating uh. Revenue um for these programs that you talked about, Mayor. Um I think it's worth taking a look at this. And I think I prefer to look at this as a half glass full than a half empty glass. I mean, I think we need to look at the positive side of things. Energy is a never changing thing in the state of California and the United States of America as well. So I think we need to get on board and uh not be fearful, but rather. Let's be proactive.
Before the hearing tonight, I was not sure about um this um process and resolution. The staff report um seemed like it was painting a blank picture. Um I wish that there would have been better communication between both city staff. Um face to face, I mean, we're asking questions um to the representatives here that should have been asked a long time ago. Um I was disappointed to see that there was a negative nine hundred thousand dollars or whatever that amount was. Um and being told that this is a good uh enterprise program for a residence. When you see a negative number uh of nine hundred thousand dollars or whatever that amount was. That had me um questioned the program. Furthermore, when I looked at the um Caffer this morning. And looked at the twenty twelve A solar renewable energy repon- revenue bond, I even had more questions than that. But it was clarified that it's not part of the um C C A or the uh.
Yeah, and that that and this number wasn't wasn't a relevant number then, right?
Yes, so again, I actually wish that there would have been better and more often uh constant communication on on this complicated program. Um Lancaster's been doing it for two, three years, maybe, um maybe it's not enough time to have that expertise, but they've been doing it. Uh there are other cities that um have joined and from what I hear from the testimony from the representatives, there hasn't been a negative uh experience. There will always be customers that are going to um not like change. And I I believe that they will have some unhappy customers, who already have them. Um to me, uh the Edison rates are gonna keep in keep going up regardless. You know, I have an opposite situation that you have, you know, you got teenagers and boys going up and starting to. Do video games and all that kind of stuff. The idea is to lower the cost of energy for a residence, that's the idea. If we don't take a risk, we'll keep paying more, that's just a fact with Edison. They're gonna keep raising the rates. One option that I have, if I don't wanna pay Edison, I could put solar panels in my house. Yeah, that'll be a upfront cost, yeah, it's gonna take me, I don't know, ten fifteen years to recover that investment. But I'll save money maybe ten fifteen years later.
See, I'm the the one thing that keeps coming back, I remember when we discussed this, I think last time you were in the council, when we first discussed this. The biggest question that came up in all of our minds is, if we've got whatever that percentage number is and that fifty cents or a dollar. On on your bill and his bill and probably the three dollars on your bill and the ten cents on your bill. Uh but I gotta keep thinking about what's what's Lockheed paying? What's Northrop paying and what's that gonna mean to those guys and uh and to some of the other. Um uh in in industrial operations. And and with the future airport with the operation with that. I'd like to see that that I would like to hope that that um that that will translate to larger savings. For those larger users. And then that transmits down to the to the resident, more jobs, better paying jobs, more opportunities out there. And we can, it's not gonna happen overnight, but I'm thinking maybe there's a potential for some incentive. And we can, it's not gonna happen overnight, but I'm thinking maybe there's a potential for some incentive to, to be able to bring some people in. I think there's some off-ramps in here. I was real skeptical before I came into this meeting tonight. I wanna thank everybody for their, their feedback on it, Jason and, and I'm sorry. Yeah, I shouldn't know that, so. So.
I, I just, I just have concerns because there's so many cities in California, why have so few joined in, is my question. And I, I still feel really burned over the power plant because I came in under Steve Williams, we're gonna build this power plant.
Here it comes.
We're gonna give cheap energy to the aerospace companies, you know, so I, I've been burned once before, so I'm real sh- I'm gonna try now.
Some of that was under our control because that's what, uh.
I've, I've, I've heard stories before about the, the low energy, it's gonna be great for the aerospace. And, and when I'm hearing we're gonna create all these jobs for the city and, you know, union jobs and this, that, and everything so that everybody can save fifty cents, you know, red flags just go off for me.
Yeah, I understand.
Cause I've heard this before with the power plant.
You know, at first I had that same concern that you mentioned with the power plant. I, I had a hard time separating the power plant from the C C A.
I know it's totally different, but.
County or, or the Lancaster, but it's a completely separate issue. When the power plant may have been a failure, you don't know what's gonna happen. If maybe it was a bad investment, maybe it was, uh, uh, because of a changing, um,
Political, it's political environment.
And, and the politics are constantly changing every single day in that we have a brand-new governor, what kind of obstacles is he gonna throw into this?
Just for, you know.
This, this is such an unknown, I'm, I'm just really cautious.
About unknowns and unquantifiable kinds of things, uh, you know, we could speculate that this might help us, you know, resolve the power plant issue. I mean, there may be the revenue provided for that, as Jason pointed out. Anyway, I'd like to make a motion to approve this resolution.
Okay, okay, yeah, we have a motion on the books, you have a second please?
I second it.
Okay, you have a motion in a second. So this is on item, let me find my, my books here.
Five point one.
This is on item number five point one. Okay, let's go ahead and show our votes.
It's not working.
Be gentle, don't press so hard, seriously. There you go.
There you go. It's three to one with Mr. Bishop absent, so, and we would need a five point two. And I think that, I think the caveat there is, is that we need to, on this item here, before I move forward on this one, um, that I think what we need is we need to make sure that we have regular routine updates on what this process is, where we at with each one of these pieces, uh, the, um, the, uh, the, the dark time between meetings. I think we, we need to make sure that, that there's communication this way, this way, and that way. So is that, anybody got any other ideas on that?
Well, I think Jason and I'll make sure that we have monthly updates for the city council. So we, council knows all the way along what we're, uh, what we're accomplishing and we'll be working together.
Dip in and write checks for these different things, I think that each one of these, it comes down to that decision tree as we keep moving down this thing. Uh, because of this, I mean, a lot of this, I think, kinda caught some of us a little bit off-guard that we need to pull the trigger tonight type of a deal. So, uh, um, on five point two here, is there any, uh, need for, um, the particular, um, uh, do we have, do we have to read an ordinance here or anything like that, or Matt, what do we need to do on this one?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do approve. We've got a motion.
I believe we need to call for a public comment, just in case. So this is on the consulting services agreement, that's on, that's the topic we're discussing here on five point two. Is there any public comment on the cons- on the, uh, consulting services agreement? Seeing none? I have a motion, do I have a motion on the?
Yeah, I do have.
Okay, and do I have a second on that then? Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the consulting agreement. Guess if you push on that thing too hard, it goes away. Three to one with Mr. Bishop absent, okay.
All right, but I think, uh, some of the commentary that took place, uh, regarding communication between the two city staffs is essential. And maybe that could have avoided the discrepancy on the, uh, Cal Choice operating at a nine hundred thousand dollar deficit instead of, uh, something that was corrected by a last-minute report. So I think the enhanced communications is gonna be crucial to the success of this program. And we need to be working in collaboration rather than resistance so that we can make a success out of this.
And I think that, uh, I think we'll see some additional avenues for communication coming up here.
I hope so.
Okay, um, all right, so. It says two, um, Mr. City Attorney, do you have any items for closed session this evening?
We have one item.
Ever heard that? What?
It's questions council asks.
Uh-oh, all right, all right, we're gonna head in there, so unless you guys are.
Do we have general public comments?
Oh, do we, is that?
Item seven.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I jumped, I, I moved around page. Okay, non-agenda items, public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none? Okay, great, we're gonna go into closed session, thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you.